Dan, are we good?
We're good.
All right. Meeting called to order. I called order on our last night, please, already. Rule call, please. Mr. Albroth, Ms. Eldar.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Ms. Coffinger.
Here.
Mr. Luna.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Vice President Gomez.
Here.
President Andrews.
Here.
All rise to the class floor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the New Milford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted in the Borough Hall and the New Milford Public Library. Notices have been sent to the Record and the Twin Borough News. The Board announces that under its longstanding policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. At this time, please be advised that all cell phones and electronic devices be turned off. Meetings of the Board are open to the public and all members of the community should feel free to participate. Before coming to the Board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments from the public. The first at the beginning of the meeting for the agenda items only, and second at the end of the meeting for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the Board, but all comments will be considered. The Board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Due to confidentiality and legal rights afforded by the State of New Jersey, members of the public are asked to not speak negatively or in a derogatory manner about any employee of the Board or any student. Furthermore, as some of you may know, at the Board's organization meeting earlier this year, Dr. Kuchar, our Board Secretary, administered the oath of office to two new Board members, not three. That is because the Board received notice from the Department of Education that Mr. Petrollia, who was elected in November to serve on this Board, was disqualified for membership as a result of the legally required criminal history background investigation. The law which is set forth in Title 18A, Chapter 12, Section 1.2 requires all new Board members to undergo a criminal history record check. This is not something that the New Milford Board of Education requires, but the State of New Jersey. The Board does not implement the law, does not make determinations as to whether or not an individual elected to the Board can or cannot serve as a Board member, and does not receive the exact reason why an individual is disqualified for service. The Department of Education, through the Commissioner's Office, makes those determinations, and when the Commissioner provides Boards with notice of disqualification, it does not provide the reason why, only that the applicant is disqualified. As a result of Mr. Petrollia's disqualification and the fact that his time to challenge the disqualification has expired today, we now officially have a vacancy on the Board and must fill that vacancy within 65 days. The Board will follow the procedures it previously used for filling a vacancy, which involves advertising the vacancy and soliciting interested candidates. At this time, we will now open to the public for items on the agenda. As outlined in New Milford Board of Education Bylaw 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Can I get a motion to open to the public? Motion by Stephanie Kuchar, Stephanie Coffinger, second by Nicole Dunn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Any comments or questions from the public? Can I get a motion to close to the public?
Motion.
Motion by Joseph Luna, Luna, second by Kate Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Now we have our Superintendent of Schools report, Mrs. Danielle Chandler.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for coming out. Okay, so I'll just cover a little bit of business first. As I do every month, I would like to provide you with both the suspension report and the HIB report. At the high school, we have one student with one day of out-of-school suspension and one student with one day of in-school suspension. At the middle school, we have two students with a total of three days in-school suspension. For HIB, we have two cases of HIB investigations. One, the first one is at the middle school. Okay, I gotta put the glasses on for this. It is system number 226011 at DEO. Case 1209, I'm sorry, that's the date, 1209-2021. This is a confirmed case. Second case at DEO, case 225799, dated 12/6/2021, also a confirmed case. No other incidents of HIB or suspensions in the other schools. Okay, so a little bit of update on how we are doing regarding return to school, health and wellness, specifically COVID-related, mostly COVID-related. Absentees today for staff, 40 classroom staff and three secretarial other with only eight subs. So it's been, it's been rough. Berkeley had 82 students absent today, Gibbs 97, David E. Owens 69. New Milford High School, total 108. This includes both absent students, remote present, and remote absent, with a total of 356. So the number is coming down. Many students and their families reported first acquiring or testing positive or being symptomatic over the break. So last week, there was a lot of students who were left over from quarantines from over the break, and as you can see, the numbers are dropping, thankfully. For those of you who didn't see today, because it just came out like sort of a quick 30-second flash in the pan, Governor Murphy has extended all of his executive orders related to COVID for the next 30 days. So that includes masking, vaccination requirements for teachers, and all of the executive orders listed in the press release. This is technically Executive Order 280 for the next 30 days. But it covers, and 281, I'm sorry, it covers 111, 112. I did post this, by the way, on the website, 207, 251, 252, 253, 264, 271, all of which will remain in effect and extends various regulatory actions taken by the Departments in response to COVID-19. Mayor Petrino reached out to me last week. He is interested in having the Borough plant a tree in honor of Zoe Caminos. He talked to her family. She was a student of ours who passed away and asked if we might be interested in actually having it planted for her on school grounds. I thought that would be a very nice way to remember her, and so I will be speaking with him about that further and trying to choose an appropriate place with her family. Ms. Grant presented at the last meeting on December 20th before break, and the proposal to move forward with this application is on the agenda this evening. Ms. Grant has graciously offered to assist us with the extensive legwork to get this old burial ground recognized as a historical landmark with the official blue historic marker. You may or may not know that New Jersey was one of the last of the northern states to outlaw slavery in 1804, but only gradually, and we didn't see the real end until closer to 1866. And New Jersey, which I did not know, had more enslaved people than any other northern state, and it's arguably, if I may quote Ms. Grant, one of our greatest flinches on our great state. So today, Ms. Grant spoke with the Bergen County Commissioner, Mary Amoroso, on her podcast, and hopeful that the Board will formally support and acknowledge those who suffered and do so right here on our property. So I ask the public to please see the Facebook page, our Facebook page, which is New Milford Public Schools. And the thumbnail is a picture of our district mascot, so you know you're on the right New Milford Public Schools page, and there's a link to her podcast if you're interested. Also on tonight's regular agenda, which is our second meeting this evening, I just would like to bring your attention to P100. A true legend, educational legend, has submitted his retirement paperwork to the Board. And as I told Mr. Tusa, although I'm very sad for the students of New Milford and of course for us, I'm thrilled for him. He has driven very far for very many years, come here and educate our children, and he is a stellar, stellar teacher. So I just wanted to acknowledge him and thank him respectfully and regrettably for his service. Okay, so from Mr. Manny Pelley at the high school, the Wedding Singer cast list has been posted for this year's musical. Are you going to talk about that at all? I don't want to steal your thunder. I'm just gonna leave it at that.
Okay.
And our student representative, I'm sure, will share a little bit more with you. Mary Stanton, who is one of our former graduates, she shared the list with us the other day, and she is directing the show, so I'm really excited for Mary to come back and join us again and to work with the kids. The Flex Scheduling, or the rebranding, fresh start of the Flex Scheduling Initiative is underway with the launch date of February 16th. The staff committee has been working actively with Mr. King, who is a liaison, and Ms. Knudsen, our media specialist, to get this rolling. They have also sought feedback from the students, and we're looking to upgrade the planning component with a software program called Efficiency. That way, teachers can offer programs within Efficiency, and students can register for programs, and it can actually schedule students for the sessions, like if you were to go to, you know, a conference. We will not be doing it every week, probably be doing it twice a month. So we have a better chance of doing higher-quality programming and more focused programming, and I believe that they're working on the schedule to possibly change the time of the day that the courses are offering, are offered. We are still in continued talks with Bergen Community College to establish our early college program partnership for the 22-23 school year. Our senior experience internship program is continuing to thrive even under these difficult conditions, right? We currently have 11 seniors interning at a variety of locations, including law firms, demo offices, veterinary hospital, our own schools, and local hospitals. In athletics, we'd like to congratulate Robbie Tormo, who broke the school record in the 55-meter at the indoor track opener. And congratulations to the competition cheerleading team on their win Saturday at the Montville Invitational. And Mr. Riccadelli asks that you please follow the new AD Council news on Facebook at NMHSAD Council. Winter protocols for home events have been shared with the basketball and wrestling parents. They are not set in stone, as they may change at any time. New updates will be sent out when necessary, but what we do know is that each player can have two family members, two guests attend, and that we are limiting additional students in the gymnasium, and the attendance is not transferable. Pevney Night is Friday, January 28th. All things cross that, we can gather and do that. So please look for a link to attend or donate to our annual scholarship event. The Pevney Scholarship supports all, almost all of the scholarships. It's not just to support one scholarship. Winter sports senior days and nights are beginning this week with boys' basketball, which is tomorrow, Wednesday, January 12th. And information has been shared with the parents via Team and Google Classrooms. We do stream our games that are in the gymnasium, so if you want to catch a game, you certainly can. Berkeley, the Berkeley students in the Spirit Club took some time before the break and created cards to be shared with the children through the Child Life Department at the Morgan Stanley NYPD Children's Hospital. Their department is involved with trying to make the kids feel as comfortable as possible during their stays, especially during the holidays. The staff shared that they were excited to be able to hand out the cards, and they were distributed to the children throughout the hospital to hopefully put a smile on their faces during a difficult time. The Student Council Committee at Gibbs organized a paper goods and personal care drive and donated the items to the Ascension Church Food Pantry in New Milford for the holidays. The Gibbs Spirit Club collected coats and jackets for donations to the Salvation Army, and our fourth and fifth grade chorus led the students in an outdoor holiday sing along on the day prior to winter break. Fun was had by all. Both elementary schools are focusing on fairness and kindness as the words of the month and are gearing up for Kindness Week in February. Just like to remind everybody that kindergarten registration for the 2022-2023 school year will be available online beginning January 18th, and the links can be found on our district website. At the middle school, the DEO Staff Spirit Coordinators have been highlighting the efforts of different staff members every week, and it is wonderful to see the many positive things that they see in each other. It has been a fantastic addition to our community and helped us maintain a positive environment for our students. The David E. Owens Science Club was honored with a certificate of sustainability for collecting 1,136 pounds of textiles during the American Recycle Day Challenge. The DEO Student Council ran a Pyjama Day fundraiser for the students, and the money collected during the Spirit Day was used to purchase new pajamas for children in Bergen County whose families do not have the means to do so during the holiday season. David E. Owens students made heart signs for their school nurse, posted them all over her door, thanking her for keeping them safe. And that's the end of my report. Thank you very much.
That leads us to our Assistant Superintendent for a quick moment instruction report, Ms. Lauren Odasta.
So I have the Start Strong Report that technically is on the regular agenda. Would you like me to do it? Oh, wait. I'm fine with it. Okay. Do you have anything else on? Do you have any other reports? No, I'm just a...
Yes, I'll just, yeah, let's do that now. Can we, Dan, though, I'm sorry, we always have the light issue.
Thank you very much.
There we go.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. Please bear with me as I just try to juggle everything here on my desk and navigate through the slides for you.
Can you see?
Tonight I have the Fall 2021 Start Strong Performance Report to share with you. I do want to preface this with, although the assessment administration took place in the beginning of the school year, the summary files with district, school, and demographic breakdowns were just shared with us in late December. So aside from the individual score reports that families receive, this is the formal reporting of that data. So just to give you a little bit of an overview, and I have mentioned some of this information before, the New Jersey Department of Education notified districts that the administration of the Start Strong Assessment in the fall of 2021 would satisfy the federal statewide assessment requirement to administer general assessments in English Language Arts, Mathematics, and Science for the 2021 school year. This flexibility that was granted to us only applies to this school year. The Start Strong Assessments administered in September and October were intentionally brief, designed to maximize instructional time and quickly provide critical data to us. These assessments give us the flexibility to address students' unique learning needs beginning right at the start of the school year. Some important things to keep in mind as we look at this data. The Start Strong Assessments were based on a subset of prioritized prior-year academic standards. So the fourth grade results, fourth grade students were tested on their end-of-third grade expectations. These assessments were administered in English Language Arts, grades four through 10; Mathematics, grades four through eight; Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II; and Science in grades six, nine, and 12. The assessments were administered in approximately 45 to 60 minutes, or a single class period. They provided us with immediate results through these platforms, and they included the same accessibility features and accommodations as the NJSLA. So even though I'm sharing this information with you tonight, as soon as our students finished taking the assessment, we were able to see how they performed, and teachers had access to that valuable information. The Start Strong Assessments utilize three performance levels. Strong support may be needed, some support may be needed, and less support may be needed to help us make decisions about the types of supports that students may need. The reports were available to teachers immediately upon the completion of the assessment, and it's important to note that these assessments are not meant to replace any assessments that we're already administering, such as our benchmarking with Linkit or AmesWeb, but they're being used to complement our efforts already in place. In December, all of our parents received an individual student report for each content area in which their child was tested during the fall 2021 administration. The ISR provides parents with a sense of their child's understanding based on the prior grade levels, end-of-year expectations, in the tested content areas at the beginning of the school year, a description of major concepts that were tested, and a starting point for conversations with our children and also their children's teachers. The Start Strong Assessments were administered in person. All students, including students with unique abilities, who are not eligible for the Dynamic Learning, Math, DLM assessments, and our English Language learners, were expected to participate in these assessments. Keep in mind, looking forward, in spring of this year, we will be administering the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment in ELA, Math, and Science. The window for students in grades three through nine runs from April 25th through June 3rd. The NJSLA Science window runs, in students in grades five, eight, and 11, runs from April 25th through June 3rd. Additional details regarding that assessment administration will be forthcoming. I'm going to begin with English Language Arts, Math, and Science breakdown at the district level. Here you're looking at performance of students across all grade levels in English Language Arts Literacy. Again, the reporting is for students in grades four through 10, and then at the bottom, all grades. In ELA, the largest percentage of students across all grade levels fall into the less support, may be needed, performance category. I know we like visuals, so accompanying each of those slides, at least for the district breakdown, there will be some graphics. In Mathematics, we continue to target high school mathematics, including Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, and have increased interventions at the elementary level with strategic small groups to target gaps as a result of the hybrid and remote learning environments. And as you already know, board-approved science programs in the district and instruction largely consist of hands-on explorations, simulations, labs, and investigations in our classrooms in Science, kids are doing. So throughout COVID, science instruction was modified to accommodate the remote and/or hybrid learning environments, but we're using this data to complement existing efforts and inform our work with students this year. Okay, these, unfortunately, we don't have graphs. Are you able to? I do have these on paper that I can pass around to the Board members after. Okay, at the elementary level, you're looking at students in grades four and five. The fourth grade assessments measured end-of-year grade-three expectations, and the fifth grade assessments measured the end-of-year grade-four expectations. It's important to note that neither of these grade-level cohorts have taken the NJSLA or sat for a standardized assessment as a result of COVID. And there is no science for the elementary level because it is typically a fifth-grade assessment, so the reporting will be for this year's sixth graders. In our middle school, we're beginning to look at English Language Arts, and math continues to be an area of focus for us. Ms. Ginley is working with our middle school math teams, and there's ongoing professional development with Dr. Victoria Bonacorso. As I mentioned earlier, with Science, our sixth graders were tested on the end-of-fifth-grade expectations. And if you walk into one of our science classrooms, especially a DEO, you'll see lab classrooms. Kids are working together in small groups. They're at tables, they're engaged in hands-on explorations in labs, and the instruction did look different when our learning environment changed. But most important, we supported that continuity of learning through the use of technology and interactive online platforms. Okay, now we're on to the high school. In the high school, student performance on the Start Strong Assessment is in line with historical NJSLA performance across all content areas. Here is math. In math, students were tested in Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. Our continued efforts in ELA, Math, and Science center on using data, including but not limited to data such as this, to make instructional decisions and target specific needs in small groups. Teachers are working on our weekly meeting days and half professional development days to disaggregate the data and engage in ongoing professional development with some of our school leaders and consultants. And then taking a look at the different subgroups, I'm just going, these are all graphs, so they're really nice visuals. First, we're beginning to look at race, and then across the bottom, you'll see the different races. When looking at race, a focus for our subgroups is in line with what previous standardized assessment data has shown us in regards to student performance in math. Here is math. And science, especially for the black, white, Hispanic, and multiple ethnicity subgroup populations. Here is gender, English Language Arts. And again, these results are overall, all students who sat for the assessment. Mathematics. And science. And our last subgroup is program. These include our English Language learners, our free and reduced lunch students, students with 504s, special education students, and our general education population. As for program, we're exploring additional supports for our English Language learners who encounter, as you know, many challenges during hybrid and remote learning. And as a reminder, our special education students have individualized education plans as well as specific learning targets and programs. So I did want to spend a little bit of time... So I did want to spend a little bit of time talking about what we're already doing, what we've done, and what some next steps might be for us. Okay, so, sorry, I just have to stand. I don't have this on paper. Professional development, we have a lot of ongoing professional development in the district. Our teachers are regularly working with their colleagues and teams as well as with consultants who come in in our core content areas. So we're continuing K-12 PD, Math PD, through Conquer Math, where we send teachers for PD with Nancy Schultz. I know that that's a name that we've been saying for years. She is an expert in the field. And in six through 12, we have a consultant who comes in and works alongside of our teachers. And the nice part about that is that the work is actually happening in our schools, in our classrooms, with our teachers, and most importantly, with our students. So it really could be individualized and personalized so that our teachers are getting the tools that they need with the, given the needs of our students. And in K through 12, we continue to work with Meredith Alvaro to provide ongoing professional development in English Language Arts. This year, we did expand that work to include supports for our co-teaching assignments. Those are classrooms where you would see a general education teacher working alongside of a special education teacher. We do have utilizing some of the ESSR funds, K-8 Responsive Classroom Institutes Plan. Those were actually set to kick off this week. But we did push that back just because of the absentees and challenges that we've been facing with coverage. But we will be moving forward with that work, and we're really excited about it. Those institutes will roll into next school year so that we can continue to train as many teachers in responsive classroom as we can. And of course, we established every year a district calendar for the ongoing analysis of data by grade department and data teams and specific days for vertical articulation so that we have our fifth and sixth grade teachers talking, our eighth and ninth grade teachers talking. It's become increasingly more important for us to do that work, especially during COVID and throughout because, you know, our needs look a little bit different at this time, as far as each and every one of our students is concerned. Some ongoing initiatives. This summer, we did extend an opportunity for K-12 Summer Learning Acceleration. Those were the academic supports as well as the social-emotional summer support camps. We will be looking to do something this coming summer. It is still being developed, so stay tuned, and we'll share that information with you as soon as we have it. We are continuing our implementation of RTI. We have scheduled a comprehensive needs assessment. So we actually have a consultant coming in to spend one day, we're starting at the elementary level. In each of our elementary schools, they're going to take a pulse, kind of observe what's already in place, identify what our next steps would be, and then help us work through that plan. And we recently approved the K-8 Learning Acceleration Leaders. Just this past Monday, our principals met with our new LALs. We're hoping that they serve as leaders for their teams and improve access to grade-level content, help prioritize those standards, just as we did during COVID. We were very strategic when we were remote, when we were remote and hybrid about what we were teaching because the environment looked very different. Our, what we were actually teaching had to look different, and we had to spend a lot of time carving out or prioritizing standards, if you will. So moving forward, now that we have important data, the Start Strong, as well as our benchmarking, we're continuing to make plans for our children and our students. And prioritizing those standards really helps form those small groups. We're continuing our Title I supports in ELA and Math in grades six through 12, and we're expanding that at the high school. We're continuing the use of many of the online learning platforms that we acquired during COVID. I spoke about them in great detail, I feel, at past meetings. And we've also expanded our use of Linkit, which is used for data warehousing, analytics, and assessment solutions. It's really our benchmarking platform. So just some final thoughts. So it's important to remember that consideration should be given to the impacts of COVID-19 on learning and testing conditions, as well as the impact on student participation in the assessments, which were required to be administered in person. In light of these considerations and of the different design and purpose of the Smart Strong compared to the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, the Department of Education strongly discourages districts, us, from comparing any individual student, school, or district Start Strong data to any state-level data for Start Strong or to any NJSLA data. So because this is a one-time, developed specifically in response to the pandemic, they're questioning us and districts from making generalizations based on this single assessment. The Start Strong assessments were not designed to predict future student performance on the NJSLA, nor were they designed to estimate what a score a student would have received if they had taken the NJSLA in the spring of 2021. So it's kind of like apples and oranges. We're looking at two different pieces of information. The Start Strong assessments were developed in response to the disruption in education caused by the pandemic and were designed specifically to inform instruction going forward. And that's really what we've been doing since the students finished testing in the fall. We're using it as another piece of that puzzle or another page in our scrapbook, which gives us a complete profile on each of our students and helps inform our instructional plan. That concludes my report.
All right, Jan's already on it. Thank you, Jan. I have a sort of a two-part question for you, Lauren.
Sure.
So you just said about the piece of the puzzle. And that's part of my question is that this year is not exactly a, what you would say, quote-unquote, "normal" year, but people hoped and expected. So I'm sure you're taking into account all of the social-emotional needs the students need and everything else, and being flexible with the way things are going. What units, that being said, what units of, what measurement are you using to determine if all of these professional developments and all of these things that you're doing, bringing in for the teachers to help the students, once it's rolled out and implemented, if it's successful or not?
So when I talk about, and I feel like I've talked about, I've kind of referenced this puzzle, where all of these different pieces that we put together, multiple measures. We're never really relying on solely one indicator or one piece. We look at a variety of different things, beginning with, we have, in addition to the NJSLA or any standardized assessments, we have benchmarking. The benchmarking helps us because we do it multiple times in the year. Students are now in, we've been doing that for quite a few years, so they've acclimated to that assessment or that platform and that way of doing it. We have classroom assessments. We have teacher feedback. So there's many different pieces that helps us measure growth.
That's, that's good. And then the, all the professional developments and the people that you're bringing in to help the teachers, whatever they're teaching the teachers, is it considered as well that the amount of flexibility the teachers need in that everything changes on a fly? Am I making sense? Like, a lot of times, these trainers will say, you know, do X, Y, and Z, and you'll get X, Y, and Z results, but you need the Plan A, the Plan B, the Plan C, everything changes on a fly.
Like our instruction should differ for each child. The professional development differs from teacher to teacher.
Okay.
Right? So we'll do, we'll often do workshops. We'll actually have our consultants work with teachers first by going into their classroom and observing what's taking place, and then engaging in a follow-up conversation with the teacher to learn more about their objectives, what their intentions were for working with students, what their plan is, and then talk about their observations. And then they'll look for a common need and then plan a purposeful workshop for the teachers, and they'll engage in that work collaboratively as a team. And then work on implementation with the support of a consultant and go on from there. So it is a very thoughtful and meaningful process. I think, you know, I had mentioned it before, one of the best things about having them come in here is because they're actually working with our kids. So yes, we do go out to different workshops, and you can find a workshop for anything, but, you know, it's very hard. The application piece, I think, is really important. And providing that support for teachers in their application of what they've learned in the PD is important.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? Paige?
I do. Thank you for all of that information. Will we be able to get a hard copy of that? Because some of it was a little blurry for me to...
Yes.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. And then it's follow-up on what Tanya had asked a little bit. So you did the Start Strong, which we said was early in the year. The teachers got the, you know, the results immediately. And the parents got it a little later, and then you got the total a little later. So we're actually a few months behind when the actual actionable data was available, right? So the question that, and I know there's benchmarking, and it's kind of on what Tanya was asking. So a lot of the things that are in it, it looks like we're trying to do things already. How, when will we be able to see if there's been any improvement? So is it going to be when they get to the NJSLA? Or is it going to be, is there going to be some other way that we can see as a board that some of those things have started to help the students?
So the students will test this spring, they'll take the NJSLA. That's '22, right? We're in '22. The last time that they took the NJSLA was in 2019.
No, I understand. And some of these kids, the third, fourth, and fifth graders haven't even tested.
Because, yes, but the window, because something that we usually do is look at over time, from one NJSLA administration to the next. So right there, we already have three-year window.
Yeah.
So what we do have is our benchmarking,
Yeah.
which we also did in the fall, and we're doing now. January is our winter window. So the benchmarking is taking place, and we'll already be able to measure fall to winter to see where there was growth and where we need to target more supports.
Right. So the reason I'm asking is because it was dramatic in math. And so that's the question is that how, because we see this, right? Publicly, we see this, but I know that in the classroom, you have the benchmarks. It's not standardized, right? So you don't, you know. How can we see what that is looking like now?
So...
Because we won't really, because to your point, the NJSLA isn't really going to show us. It's comparing apples to oranges. Not going to see that. You could see a dramatic improvement, or you could see nothing. It's just, that's what I, I would like to see, because math is where we definitely have...
Typically, we share benchmarking results, which we can after this administration period.
Okay.
The other thing for parents who may be at home, the start, you know, this information that you received, I think it was mailed out right before our holiday recess.
Yes.
It serves as a conversation. You know, you can ask questions too. So if there is something specific that you are wondering, feel free to reach out to your child's teacher. Maybe in February, I have to check the date, but if our, if we could share out the benchmarking?
Yeah.
Then we will...
Because I think the Linkit assessment is a more reliable tool for us to review and compare. So I think that comparison between the fall assessment and this winter assessment is going to tell us much more than this isolated...
Yeah.
Because we don't even have anything to compare these results to.
Yeah.
And it's a shorter test, and it's a more targeted test, and so we don't even really know what this means. It's really being presented to us completely and totally out of context.
Yeah.
There are no comparative data, and they're cautioning us, "Don't compare yourself to others." Whereas in the past, we were mandated per CUSAC
Yes.
to present comparative data. So they're even saying to us, "Don't do that. We're just giving you this information."
Yeah.
So it's really, it's a little frustrating. And the reporting out, for those of you who may not know, Lauren reported on all the subgroups, that's a required component of the testing report as well. You must report out, you know, on the subgroups. And so that's part of that required piece. But I also think too, you know, we've taken a really close look at how we are spending any additional, any of the funding that we receive to take a close look at what is it that we can do to support the students with this funding, and that's been the crux of, you know, what we are doing. Everything, to get as close to, get the money as close to the classrooms as possible.
Right. So that's kind of where I was going with that, because, you know, we're supporting, and that's really what it comes to us, is support this program, support this initiative, support them. Although the ESSR funds are not coming out of our budget, it is a benefit to us, right? So we need to use them appropriately. So, but that's the question I have is, we can't compare NJSLAs. We're not going to be able to compare what happened in the beginning to what they're going to do in the NJSLA. So that's why I was asking, is how can we see as a board that what we're doing is moving the needle with these students in a way that matters? And I know you're saying you have that data, so if there would be a way that we could see that too.
Lauren, certainly report out on that.
Yeah, I think that would be more significant.
We also have our running records,
Yep.
which is another piece, very valuable information. And the parents do receive students' guided reading level from the teacher through multiple assessments throughout the year, so that's some of the piece too. And then that's on the report card as well, whether or not the students are meeting guided reading level benchmarks, K-8.
Okay, yeah.
And so it's just another tool.
Yes, that's right. And individually, as a parent, I know I have that tool, but as a board member to see
Yep.
district-wide, that would be very helpful. And this was very helpful too. Thank you.
I think typically, we've shared the Linkit.
We have.
Yeah, yeah. But January is our second window, so
Yeah, that'll be good.
I can't say that it started last week, just because...
Of last week.
And I also can't say that we're going to finish on time, because that's also, we're trying, we're doing that in person just so that students aren't having to take the assessment at home. So based on, you know, our attendance.
I got it. Okay, so it's impacting the...
There may be some delays, but it will be made up when we're finished.
Okay. It's, I'm keeping in mind the fact that there are three grade levels that have never tested before. This is the first, really a first for them, and there's something to be said for that.
Luckily, they have been testing on Linkit.
Yeah, so that'll be good.
So they do have an experience with a web-based assessment, right?
Yeah.
So thank goodness for that.
That's what I'd like to see, yeah.
And, you know, they know how to practice that, and they, so that's a good thing, and they're becoming more proficient with their digital tools. So the transition to NJSLA was really a struggle for the students who were used to taking pen and paper assessments. These students are now used to the digital tool, so it's just a different, just a different challenge.
Yeah.
Cheryl, you have a question?
Yeah. So what's being done, or how have we done anything to assess why the results aren't what they are, right? Because obviously, I think the idea in this room is that they're not ideal, right? I mean, notwithstanding COVID-19, all those things, but do we know why, you know, comparatively, for instance, why Berkeley scored much differently than Gibbs? Why, you know, male and female racially, there's such a difference between, you know, where they've fallen as far as the assessment? Do you know what I mean? Because I know what we're doing to move the needle forward, but do we know why the needle is where it is?
Are you asking me or...
I'm asking whoever wants to answer the question.
You want to start in the middle of it?
You know, I personally, I think it's difficult to make sweeping generalizations based on this data, especially when, you know, the comparison between the schools differs from what we've seen historically. on all of our other standardized assessments. Um, historically, one school has outperformed the other, and that's not what you see here tonight. So in in regards to that, I think that that's challenging.
And it's an outlier.
And it's an outlier. This data is in line. Uh, math is, had been a district goal. We have been looking at, um, you know, our instruction. We have been looking at, um, program components. We've been increasing, we've been looking at increased time for instruction. Um, we've been looking at one grade span to the next. So when, specifically at times when like program changes, or when our students are going from elementary and then into the middle school. So there's lots of different things that we're looking at and, um, different supports that we've been trying to put in place.
But ironically, what we saw this year on this assessment, for example, sixth-grade math was a strong math assessment. Historically, sixth-grade math has not been a strong math assessment, but on this assessment it was. So there are a lot of things in this particular report that are unlike things we've ever seen before and don't fit the conversations that we've had over time. Um, you know, there are certain points where where you see struggles. For example, Algebra I in grade nine is always a low score, because if you were a strong math student, you would have taken Algebra I in grade eight. And the grade eight Algebra I scores are usually very high. So that's something we do see, and then we did see it again in this assessment. So, um, we have changed professional developers in some areas and changed the style of professional development um, to pushing into the classroom so that the professional developer can see the instruction, can see the setup, can see how things are being taught and assessed to try to get to the why of maybe some of the struggles were happening. We've looked at resources, we've reduced class sizes, our math classes are smaller than they have been. We increased time. We have extended, we have daily, um, math instruction, for example, in extra time at the middle school. Um, we are increasing time in in math at the elementary school. So we've looked at a lot of different things. Um, we've increased our supports and our our concentration with the tiers at the elementary school. Tier one, tier two students who need math or reading, um, instruction are getting increased time. We've actually absorbed those teachers into our local budget, um, for good reasons. So previously, we were using Title I money to fund the supports at the elementary level, but Title I money fluctuates, and then our ability to provide those supports fluctuated. Um, so we absorbed those positions into our general budget, so we didn't have to rely on Title I money to provide those services that we knew were very much needed. That was something that Stephanie did. Um, I thought that was a very wise move. She did that a few, two years, a year ago, two years ago, something like that, two years ago. Your first budget. So, um, we, we've looked at it all. Um, when it comes to things like gender, it's very common, and I was looking very closely at the gender slides. It's very common to see, um, young girls perform higher in English Language Arts than boys, and arguably, it's very simple. Young girls like to read, on the whole, more than boys do. It's, boys are more active. Uh, sometimes you have to say to yourself, what do we have in the collection that boys want to read? Can we find out what they want to read, make sure that, make sure that we have it? They tend to like to read, uh, less literature, novel-type things and more action, biography, uh, historical figures, sports figures, things like that. I'm not trying to make generalizations or excuses, but we do, we do find that in in reading. And boys sometimes tend to outperform girls in math, but I did not see that here. So the girls were higher in English Language Arts, but boys and girls were relatively even in everything else. So we're, we're, we look at everything. Um, when it comes to students with disabilities, uh, we definitely take a close look at that, because we want to ensure, and one of the reasons why we do more and more collaborative pairs is because you want to have a content area expert in the classroom, in the classroom with a process expert. And you want to pair these two professionals together to make sure that the content is delivered with accuracy and that the process expert supports the content area teacher in how those students with those particular needs learns best, learn best. When it comes to socioeconomic discrepancies, we know, um, in education that socioeconomics can dramatically influence a child's achievement in school. And it's one of the reasons why we were always so happy to see the high achievement of, um, the students in Berkeley School, because the socioeconomics of Berkeley School is lower than it is of Gibbs, but that was not the report that we saw here, and we're not quite sure why it panned out that way.
Can you remind me what the timeframe was that this assessment is supposed to be analyzing?
It's supposed to be analyzing the the nineteen, I'm sorry, the 2021 school year, the close of business for those kids of that year, but it was assessed in the fall. So now, kids who left school in June have maybe the worst year ever, took a whole summer off, came back in September, and then tested. I mean.
And it was only forty-five to sixty.
Forty-five to sixty-minute test.
Based on a prioritized subset of the previously researched.
So it's just not an ideal assessment, but we, we do, uh, we look at everything.
Science is another outlier, because historically, we've performed very well in the area.
Yes, we have.
Exceptional in the area of science. So, and that looked very different in the Strong.
But I'm not surprised by that, considering the fact that.
Instruction looked very different.
The instruction for science and the instruction for math, our math is very hands-on. Lots of manipulatives, lots of collaboration, and, you know, that takes, certainly takes a backseat when, um, you're working in a Google Classroom at home. And I know that the teachers did everything that they could to provide the students with whatever they could give them at home, um, but that's, it's the reality of, you know, it's like teaching somebody to cook on a, with no, with no tools. It's hard. So we, we do, we look at everything. And we try to target those things.
Tanya, I believe I saw you had a hand up, and then, did you have a question?
Yes.
Okay, and then Stephanie, you also had a question?
I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay. Tony first, and then Stephanie.
Mrs. Shanley, as you, as you mentioned about the, your observation that normally sixth grade doesn't test as well.
No, normally, sixth grade, we see a, um, a math dip from fifth, and they're coming together from two different schools. This sixth, this sixth-grade class, which I was measured in the beginning of seventh grade, was strong in math.
So the seventh grader.
That means the sixth-grade teachers are doing a really good job in math.
So when you draw a comparison to the past, you're, trying to use my word, pleasantly surprised.
Pleasantly surprised.
That the seventh graders, it's kind of a look back to sixth grade.
Yeah.
Scored so well.
Yes.
Has there been, um, obviously, you know, being in the business, with all the data we get, we get the item analysis and, you know, and you're able, I know in my district, we're able to see, unfortunately, a certain content strand, you know, eighty percent are in need of strong support, et cetera.
Yep.
And we're able to go back and figure out, okay, well, we're covering that concept. We were virtual at that time, we were in person at that time. Has the district been able to identify any certain curricular strands and where we were at that point in terms of instruction, you know, glaring weaknesses, if you will?
You know, that's a really good question. Um, I think partly because the standards are, they loop throughout the year. It becomes difficult to do that, because you may revisit something. It might be, you know, if there's something isolated, a geometrical concept or something like that, might be isolated, but if you're talking about, you know, um, algebra, I, I'm trying to think of a strand, like an algebraic.
The math is easier to break that down.
Exactly. It's, it's hard, it's harder to do, and the co, the math program that we have, both at the elementary level and at the middle school level, although the middle school does have their, their units and books, they don't abandon the concept because they move on to the next one. So it is constantly a building of skills. But we do take a look at, and we have worked with the teachers, I haven't, I haven't been here for three years, but worked with the teachers on disaggregating the data and saying, you know, where did we hit the mark? And where do we still have work to do? And very often, the teachers will say, is students really struggle with that? You know, they'll, they'll see it, and they'll go, yeah, they, that, that's something that they really do struggle with. And then sometimes they request professional development on that something. Um, but I know that they're very conscientious regarding taking a close look at that data. I mean, math, they're math teachers, they love data. Let's.
We're also doing that in ELI.
And, yes, they are doing it in ELI.
Um, as far as sharing the reports, I just want you to know, there will be some blanks in there, and any, any pools or groups of students under ten will be removed from the report prior to sharing it. Tony, was your question, or sir?
In case there's blanks.
Okay. Stephanie, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, just one of the things that I wanted to say, um, in my own experience and in talking to a couple of parents, was the results that we received on the Strong Report didn't necessarily reflect what we were seeing on the report cards and all of the information that we were getting at home. So I'm keeping that in mind with a grain of salt, that what I saw on the test is just a day, a very small snapshot in time. Um, this is not what I normally see on the assessments. This is not normally what I see on a day-to-day basis. This is not what I see in progress reports or report cards. So, um, you know, when you balance all of the information together, I think this is a piece, but it's not the big picture. So that's just my comment.
The others, like the NJSLA has been tested, right? It's a, there's a.
Enormed.
Component. Yeah, it's normed.
Uh-huh.
Um, this was created as a Band-Aid during the pandemic. It's never been administered to children before, um, and that's why they're cautioning us from making those generalizations or, um, you know, comparisons.
Yeah, thank you for stressing that.
Um, you, you have a question also, but I agree that, um, both what Paige and Cheryl said. So for somebody who loves looking at data, um, and I could just imagine the, the studies that can be done on us, when I said for you to make it concise for us, and you also, who commented on the different ethnicities and genders and things like that, the studies that could just be done, and those would be intensive. Um, but it is a snapshot, which is why I think it'll be great if and when you do, when you do report out to us to simplify it for us. We don't have all of the data, but just compiling it together, so even if it's one slide where we can see comparisons and growths from the different pieces that put together, so that we can just see if our efforts, just how you revisit and you assess if the efforts were successful, if they weren't successful, next test, but I think that's great. Um, Paige, you did have another question.
Yeah. It's more a question around, um, observations. So we have always had a math weakness in the district, if we say that, right? That's our thing that we're always striving for. Not that we're not always striving to do better in, say, English Language Arts or science, but as you said, science, we seem to usually outperform the state leaps and bounds.
Right.
And even in English Language Arts, over the years, the programs that have been put in place have really, you know, brought more students up to that level. Question? So in math, you talked about how math is done in a way that is kind of like a loop, and, you know, we do that, and I personally, my brain will work that way. But, but not all adults who have children in school understand how that works. And so when your child comes home and you're assisting them, especially in this environment, right? In the last year and a half, they, the, there is that home assist that maybe doesn't happen as well either, because maybe the parents are struggling with these concepts and how to do this and how to teach it or help them and support them. So I know before the pandemic, there had been, um, questions about doing, and I'm not even saying we really are in a position to do this now, like family math nights or whatever, but we do these things where we give the parents support in social emotional learning, but maybe even parental support. I don't know if that's something that would help, because with the ELA, it's a little easier to understand, read this book and find this signpost and write this thing, and here's a description. I may not have always done it, but I can understand.
We, we had nights where we had Nancy Schultz and we had, um, was it ELA? And Meredith come and do family nights.
Right.
For the parents, so that they could teach them, okay, this is what workshop means. This is what it looks like.
Right, on the ELA side of things.
This is what our, right, and then Nancy would come and do, have the stu, the, the parents actually engage in, like, an expl, math exploration.
Right, so that didn't happen as often as you, as it may have seemed. I, I remember it happening one time.
Uh-huh.
But that's not, it didn't happen.
Right.
Just saying for me. But I'm just asking if because of this, there might be a consideration that the parents are also struggling with helping their kids at home, and there is a lot of things that they're still, you know, they're doing a lot now in the classroom because they're in person, but maybe that was also part of the, part of that dip. Because that, that was a lot of the anecdotal feedback that I think I saw out there in general was, you know, I don't, I don't know how to help them. I'm like, well, like, you know, like, you know, that kind of thing. Whereas they know how to help with some other things. So I don't know if there's a consideration for that, maybe some way to look at that as well.
Yeah, the, the parent workshops are, are great one time if you can make the date and you're available, right? And you kind of have to squeeze the whole year into an hour.
Right.
Um, with the consultant. So I'll speak to the elementary program, we use everyday math. They're rich with family letters, so preceding every unit of study. There's a detailed family letter that goes home. The algorithms are very different, and it's not how I learned when I was in school. So, um, there's things like lattice and, um, I have to really.
It's just, oh, that division thing.
It's just very different.
Different, different ways of solving problems.
And it's also.
Lattice is multiplication.
Right.
Um, but it, but there is detailed, and, I mean, they may look like worksheets or not important. They're full of valuable information for parents, and they're meant so that you can help support your child at home.
Right.
Um, the other good thing to know is that the answers are in there for their home links, uh, so that you can also help them when they're bringing something home and working on it.
I, I'd say adults are just like children.
Yeah.
Are all different kinds of learners.
Sure.
And not all adults can take a piece of paper and then translate that into helping. So I was just thinking, as we're talking about this, that there might be an element of that as well.
I also want to make a plug.
With those students that you're seeing struggle, maybe it's also.
Um, I'm also gonna make a little plug, if you don't mind, for our family, um, series.
Yep.
For Care Plus. So as you know, the academic piece goes hand in hand with the social emotional learning, and lots of our students have struggled with many different things over the past year and a half, as our adults have. Our next presentation is Wednesday, January 19th. It would be really great to see more of you there. They're going to be doing, um, sharing a variety of this, different resources that are available to parents, um, just to help you support your own child's well-being at home, which will then support them, you know, coming to school ready to learn and receive. So my little plug.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lauren.
Any other questions or comments for Lauren?
I am actually going to take the liberty to rearrange our agenda, because as we were all speaking, I noticed Mackenzie's report is usually on our regular agenda. So it isn't on this agenda, but we always have Mackenzie go first, because she's a student, and we want her to have the opportunity to go home and do all these fabulous things we were talking about.
We dragged her to the testing report.
I apologize, Mackenzie.
Next time, give us a wave.
No.
No.
Okay, I thought it was interesting.
But I would like you to go next, if you're all right with that.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so first, I hope everyone's having a very Happy New Year so far. And January is a bit of a Friday month for our Student Council right now, but we still have lots of great stuff in the works. So right now, we're preparing a video for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And in the past, the Student Council has held assemblies to commemorate Martin Luther King, but with the current situation of COVID and prioritizing everyone's safety, we figured making a video would be a safer way to celebrate him and his message. So we're planning on sending out the video to the whole school by Tuesday, January 18th. Um, the Student Council is also working hard on continuing ideas and plans for our Spring Spirit Week and Olympic events. And I talked about both the events in past meetings, but just to recap a little bit, we're planning the Spirit Week. we're planning the spirit week leading up to an Olympic event that will kind of take the place of our normal field day that we have here. And these will both take place toward the end of the school year, into the spring, but we're still planning new ideas and starting to put them into action now. And lastly, here at board meetings, we usually report on everything that our student council is doing, but the student council is only one part of our school community. So with that in consideration, we want to give a more diverse account of what's happening at New Milford High School to the board and the viewers of meetings online. So we're assembling a committee whose job it will be to talk to various clubs and organizations in the school so then we can present better reports with a better view of all the school activities happening rather than just the student councils. So our student council is very, very excited about the fun events we have coming up and our video and our committee in the works and we can't wait to continue forming great ideas and projects for the rest of the school year.
Okay, you going to tell us a little bit about the show?
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I'm not letting you off the hook, but you tell us about the show.
So I mentioned this last time, our show is The Laying Singer and we are very excited about that too. Our cast list just came out, I think on Sunday, and so we're very excited about that. Also, Ms. Ryan, I want to congratulate Brendan because he's in the show too. Yeah, so
And what, and what part are you playing?
Oh, I'm playing Grandma Rosie.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So and when will the show be?
Um, the show will be, I'm pretty sure it's the first weekend in March, so
They may be moving that a little
Yes, it might be moving later.
A little bit.
March, definitely sometime in March. At some point it is spring musical, so sometime in spring.
Okay. Super. Thank you.
And hopefully if it's pushed back into spring a little later, hopefully more people can attend.
Right.
In person, I'm sure live stream will be there.
Yes.
Yes, I think they chose the show because they could stream it.
Excellent.
Oh.
Yes, of course.
Because not all shows can be streamed. Correct, correct. And Dan's giving us the nod, so that must, that must make it true. That must make it true.
Thank you, Dan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mackenzie?
Thank you for expanding the recording to reach out to other groups.
Yeah, I love it.
Something, I think that's fabulous. And I am looking forward to seeing you play a sassy grandma.
I can't wait. Well cast.
All right, Mackenzie, as always, you already sat through way too much. I'm sure you have homework and all kinds of things to do. You're welcome to stay, but you may go as well. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
All right, so now we are back to what is printed on the agenda and we have our business administrator report, Dr. Stephanie Kuchar. So she stops taking minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So first, our audit field work has began this week. They started with Piro and will shift with council table in the coming days. So everyone in my office is busy and hands-on working on getting all of that information over to the auditors. We're also in the beginning phases of the budget. We received all the requests from the buildings administrators, buildings and grounds, the office of curriculum and instruction requests, as well as the child study team. I want to take the time to acknowledge the preparedness of our buildings and ground staff under the direction of our buildings and ground supervisor, Mr. Piero, in getting all the equipment and trucks ready for our first snowstorm of the season last week, all while being faced with many absences in our custodial and maintenance ground staff due to COVID. I would also like to recognize and thank the town of New Milford for their support and partnership with the salt. This is the first year that we partnered and the town is filling up our trucks as well, so we don't have salt on property anymore. And that was the first thing I was told the morning of the ice was how smoothly and wonderful the town was, the calls, they just got their trucks in line with the town and it was really smooth, so thanks so much to them for that. And lastly, tonight I want to thank and acknowledge my secretary, Colleen O'Handlin, for getting all the policies updated and uploaded to our policy manual and online access. I had no idea what a process that was. Not only is it formatted, but then it's printed, put into a binder that's housed in my office, uploaded to Strassheim's software, which is then posted through our website. So it's a very timely process and she's very meticulous and so it's many hours, she was here early, stayed late, and was really dedicated to getting those up and running for all of you to have. And I just want to acknowledge that since Ms. Shanley has returned to New Milford, the Board of Education has updated 96 policies. So from September through December, 96 policies were updated. This is tremendous work that our leadership has been working on over the past few months, so I just want to thank you all for that.
The board, the board felt it. I didn't do that alone, they felt it, I dragged them through it with me.
Yes. So I just want to say thank you all for that and my reports will continue to be budgeted and I don't know what in the coming months, but for now, that's all I have.
Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Kuchar? All right, so now we have items, agenda items for discussion. Review of the tentative agenda for the regular meeting to be held tonight. We have a review of board action. I do want to read, I forwarded to the other board members some emails I received, but in case not, you know, it was somewhat last minute, so not everybody lives on their phones, we all have lives, so I want to read that just in case that you have that. The first one is, as someone who was born and raised, it says, address President Andrews, but it says to share with the board. As someone who was born and raised in New Milford and who has spent the last 37 years as a history teacher in the district, I was fascinated with the discovery by Council President Grant of an African-American burial ground on the Gibbs School property. Her presentation at the Board of Education meeting and the subsequent coverage on northjersey.com and on NJ.com brought well-deserved attention to this forgotten piece of New Milford's history. It is especially relevant as the community prepares to celebrate the borough's centennial. All residents are aware of the fact that New Milford is the birthplace of Bergen County and the home of the oldest cemetery in the county, the French Huguenot Cemetery by the Borough Hall. This discovery will add another chapter to our rich history. It is my hope that the Board of Education will preserve Council President Grant's request for a historic marker to be placed on the site of Gibbs School so that the future generations can appreciate the full history of our community. Please let me know if the Social Studies Department of New Milford High School can be of any assistance in this matter. I look forward to sharing the story with our students. Sincerely, David Wilson. And he did put a note to please share. The second is President Andrews. The undersigned faculty members at New Milford High School would like to commend the Board of Education for inviting Council President Grant to make a presentation to the public regarding her discovery of a lost African-American cemetery on the grounds of Gibbs School and we would encourage the board to file an application to the state for a historic marker to be erected on the site. Please feel, and again, please feel free to share. And it has, it has a number of signatures. The signatures above are the high school social studies department with addition of, and has a few other teachers. So I wanted to share that. So review of board action from the rest of the board members, any questions to review?
No.
Okay. Review of educational programs and curriculum. Review of personnel recommendations. Review of finance. Review of facilities. At this point, do we have any liaison or board committee reports? Additional board items? Old business? New business?
I can get a hand in. And I probably should have brought it up.
Sorry, I thought you were stretching there.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
I was kind of off. It's actually the tentative board meeting dates. Just a quick question. So I know we're trying to move toward being more efficient, efficient use of time. So the only question or thought that I have around us doing a meeting and then the next day doing the next meeting is just do we have enough time in case there is something that comes up that needs to be followed up on or that we need to question? I just, I want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position where we, we don't have enough time to do that work.
So initially I was trying to set the dates two days apart, but that didn't work for multiple board members. So to move it then a week apart goes back to, now we have a whole week's worth of stuff that could potentially get added to the agenda and then we're revisiting a lot of new items again. So that was why I said, and based on some of the board members' schedules and feedback I received, Tuesday and Wednesday seemed to work for most people better than, let's say, Tuesday and Tuesday or Tuesday and Thursday. And since Monday's out and Friday's out, I mean, I, I was hoping to get them closer together, not necessarily back to back, but closer together so that we didn't have two full meetings. And if you bring them closer together, then you can do all of the work on the one night and the next night is mostly the formality of approvals and/or you could do a presentation or something like that.
Right.
And then it gives us three weeks out of the month with no schedule so that we can conduct committee meetings.
That's what I was going to ask. So, so in that way, will we try to structure some of those?
Yes.
To be, you know, maybe
Well, now that we have our committees established, yes.
So we're voting on the committees to approve the committees this evening, everyone should have reviewed that. And the committee heads can schedule the meetings, they reach out to the other committee members as well of any, as any administration that needs to be present for the meetings.
Okay.
So there are certain committees that meet more on a regular basis, others don't really need to, so the committee heads can take that initiative to schedule the meetings as things come up, as well as, as things come up sometimes. As Ms. Shanley tells us, we need to have another policy meeting.
We do. So likely, when it comes to like policy meeting, I'll reach out to the committee and say, do these dates work for you and try to organize what we're working on. And likely, when you're working on finance and facilities, Dr. Kuchar will reach out to the committee members and say, does this time work for you? And then if the other committees want to meet or want to discuss something, like Nicole, reach out to me this year about athletics and say, we'd like to have a committee. And then we, we reach out and we try to get that going, so.
Okay.
Thank you. The finance and, finance and facilities will be busy because we'll be planning the budget and
Personnel?
Will be busy, well, not personnel. Negotiations will be busy because of negotiations for the admin and then policy, so we'll, then we will have three weeks. It does make it easier to have three weeks without nights scheduled, unless anybody else has a
Agreed, especially because you've already blocked out these nights.
Right.
So those are three nights that you have blocked out.
Right.
Okay. At this point, we'd like to open to the public. As outlined in the Milford Board of Education bylaw 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Can I get a motion to open? Motion by Paige Ryan, seconded by Stephanie Coughinger. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero, so now we have
Eight.
Thank you, eight zero. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, I'd like to get a motion to close to the public. Motion by Nicole Dunn, seconded by Anthony Alvaro, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Board member requests for additional information? In that case, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Paige Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. And we will roll right into our regular agenda. Meeting called to order, roll call, please. Mr. Alvaro?
Present.
Ms. Alvaro?
Here.
Ms. Dunn?
Here.
Ms. Coughinger?
Here.
Ms. Lunam?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Still here.
Vice President Gomez?
Here.
President Andrews?
Here.
Do we need to do the flag float again?
No.
Okay, we already did the flag float, we already did the board statement. So we will roll right into Committee of the Whole. I would like to make a motion to approve the December 21st regular, December 21st closed, and the January 4th organization minutes. Can I get a second? Second by Nicole Dunn and
Comments?
Yes, that's where I was going. I know some people might have to refuse themselves. So any comments or questions?
I have to abstain from January 4th because I wasn't here.
Me too.
Yes.
I'll abstain from the 21st.
Also abstain from the 21st.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All in opposed? Motion passes eight zero with exception of those who abstain. And again, I would like another motion to open to the public. As outlined in the Milford Board of Education bylaw 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Motion. Motion by Paige Ryan, seconded by Anthony Alvaro, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Do we have any questions or comments from the public? Can I get a motion to close to the public?
Motion close.
Motion by Mr. Lunam, seconded by Stephanie Coughinger, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. All right, we did have our student representative report to us already. Ms. Shanley, do you have another report?
I do not have another report.
Okay. Ms. Adaxa, do you have another report?
Yes, I have another presentation. May worry everybody? No, nothing.
Okay. Jessica George, do you have another report?
I do not.
All righty then. In that case, we will go straight to board action. I would like to make a motion to approve BA 34, BA 67, BA 68, BA 69, note that the agenda has been updated, BA 70, BA 71, and BA 72. Questions, comments?
Nope, second?
Okay, seconded by Paige Ryan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Educational Programs and Curricular Committee, I seek a motion to approve C 26. Once again, so happy to see field trips coming back. Can I get a second, please? Second by Nicole Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Having the recommendation of the superintendent, I would like to make a motion to approve P 51, P 82, P 86, P 97, P 98, P 99, P 100, P 101, and P 102. Can I get a second? Seconded by Paige Ryan, roll call, please. Mr. Alvaro?
Yes.
Ms. Alvaro?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Coughinger?
Yes.
Mr. Lunam?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Gomez?
Yes.
President Andrews?
Yes.
Finance Committee, Heather Gomez?
I seek approval for F 118, F 119, F 120, F 121, F 122, F 123, F 124, F 125, and F 126.
Can we get a second? Seconded by Nicole Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Facilities Committee, Nicole Dunn?
I seek approval for FA 13, FA 14, FA 15.
Can I get a second, please? Seconded by Joseph Lunam, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Do we have any liaison or board committee reports? I don't want to put you on the spot, do you have any?
Not a report, but a committee.
Yes.
So for, now that we have the official committee, negotiations committee will have to reach out to those of you that are on the committee because we do have the administration contracts up. So I'll reach out to you to coordinate, to get the dates, to have that.
Also, not a report, but I just want to remind everyone Also, not a report, but I just want to remind everyone that the new board members and myself and our county representative will be having our training tomorrow. We moved it from the downstairs office to up here so that we have more room to spread out and social distance. And Stephanie, please, I'm still not good with this board, so we'll make sure everything's set up from that, right? Okay, excellent. Thank you. All right, that's all I have. Anyone else on the board now? Yes.
I think, I think we just received information regarding the county meeting, which I think is January 31st.
Yes. Actually, Stephanie, would you mind, would you register our members? I believe I read that email as virtual only, correct?
Yes.
The 31st? So if Dr. Kuchar could register us, and then when, for the new members who haven't attended before, once she registers us, they will send us a link directly. It's live streams, so they'll send us a link directly. It's not, I'm trying to think of how they handled it before. You cannot, can you go back and watch it? I think this meeting, you have to be there in person.
Not the county meetings.
Yeah, the county meeting, you have to watch it at that time. It's not like a YouTube link where you can go back.
Correct.
So it's live streams for us to watch. One, they do take attendance, and it goes towards our credits as a board. And two, most of the topics, usually, I've attended one county meeting where I thought, blah. The rest of them are always very, I think it was Tony's first. I was like, I swear, they're not always like this.
Very long.
The rest of them have been very informative and very interesting. They usually have very good topics, very good speakers. We learn a lot from them. So if you can, everyone has schedules, but if you can, let's all attend. Thank you for bringing that up, Tony. And yeah, they were trying to go back to in-person, but for now, it's virtual. So, all right, anymore, did you have anything for us, councilmen?
Yes, and thank you. I wish all of you a happy new year. As everybody knows, this year is the 100th anniversary of Burrows Incorporated. And there's going to be many activities and festivities planned for this year in celebration. And we were really, really excited and looking forward to partnering with the district to celebrate the 100th anniversary. So we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Additional board items? Old business? New business? Once again, can I get a motion, please, to open to the public? As outlined in the Milford Board of Education bylaw 0167, each statement made by a participant shall be limited to two minutes. Can I get a motion? Motion by Paige Ryan, seconded by Stephanie Coughnther. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Can I get a motion to close to the public, please? Motion by, excuse me, Anthony Alvaro, seconded by Nicole Dunn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Do we have any board member requests for additional information?
I do, but I think I'll, I'll talk about privately. I'm not sure if I want to speak about it out loud.
Okay. All right, we'll definitely reach out, then. Okay. Am I forgetting something?
No. Congratulate the board on two meetings in a minute, an hour and 33 minutes.
I know, that's amazing.
End of testing presentation. I'm just saying.
Thank you for saying that because.
You can't tell by the clock, I know.
And I forgot my phone tonight, so I don't have a clock.
It's 8:34, Dr. Kuchar.
Okay. Well, not yet, not yet. We need to motion and adjourn. Can I get a, can I get a motion, please?
I have a request for additional information. It's going to take like 45 minutes.
And that's a no. That's a no. I'm kidding.
Okay, a lot of hands went up. Who motioned? Heather, I saw you. Motion, motion by Heather Gomez. Second, Stephanie Coughnther. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Everyone have a good evening. Stay warm.
Thank you. Good night.
Out there.